... meeting of October 9th, 2017, the time is 7:30. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Here.
Councilman Corbett.
Present.
Councilman Gettings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Present.
Mayor Herman.
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise for an invocation to be led by Mayor Pro Tem Mark Bliss and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Dear wise and loving heavenly father, let me first thank you in advance for the thoughts, comments, and concerns for those who are with us in person here tonight, as well as our thoughts to those who are watching this meeting at home. Thank you for the outstanding leaders in our schools, our community groups, and all of those on our boards and commissions who are working very hard raising up the next generation of leaders in our city and making this a better place to live for anyone of all ages. Loving heavenly father, I come to you this hour asking for your blessings and help as we're gathered here tonight. I pray that you guide our council in the matters at hand, and I ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence as we focus on making this community even more prosperous with each and every passing day. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Oh.
Okay. Hearing none. We don't have any presentations or public hearings, so are there reports on the agenda of interest to parties in the audience?
Hello, my name's Gloria Moore. I live at 27-368 Dartmouth.
Is there a report on the agenda that you want to bring up?
Yes. The Community Development Block Grant Home Chore Snow Removal Program. Is that...I don't exactly understand that. Is that a grant to pay somebody to shovel snow, or is that a specialized program?
It's to shovel snow at residences. There will be a report later, and if you have questions, just signal for me.
Well, that was my question. I didn't understand it. That's all.
Okay. If you're not satisfied by the report and the discussion later, raise your hand. I'll recognize you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The meeting is open to the public now. If anyone would like to address City Council on any subject, now is the opportunity. It's not required, but it'd be helpful if you could give your name and address. Good evening.
Okay, good evening. My name's Gloria Moore. I live at 27-368 Dartmouth. Friends of the Madison Heights area, senior citizens, is going to have another third Tuesday meeting, October 17th, at 7 o'clock over at Wilkinson Middle School. Beverages and snacks are on us, and everyone is welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Randy Speck, 3903 Nutcracker Court in Oxford, Michigan. I've had their snacks before. Mr. Corbett, they're good.
That's your time limit.
At the City Council event a couple of weeks ago, Meet the Candidate event, I was able to be there on the way down. I had a family emergency, had to go back, so I wanted to come back and just say a couple of things about some of the things that we're doing in Madison. It's been a great start to the school year. You know, if you think back, and I'll talk about our bond proposal in just a minute, but two and a half years ago when we first moved into the new Madison Elementary Building, we had 350 kids in that building. We now have 530 kids in that same building, grades K through 5, and that's growth from within the southern part of Madison Heights. And so it's been really great to see. We just had our test scores released not too long ago. We have the highest third grade math and reading scores in the surrounding community, in the surrounding districts. And I say that not for competition, but I say that for you to know that as a City Council, you've got two really good school districts operating in the city. You've got really good things that are happening within the city. I know that you know that, but I think it's important to hear me say that as well. I really appreciate the work that the Landfair folks are doing, and I think we're doing really good work as well. So we do have an upcoming bond proposal happening on November the 7th. We're looking to reinvest some money into Madison High School. Not too long ago, one of my employees was at a garage sale and saw a laminated front-page news article of when Madison High School originally opened. You probably would like that, Margine, to take a look at that.
Yes, definitely.
I don't know when the last time...it's probably been since about 1960, since we did any good work inside that building. So there's a lot of good upkeep that needs to happen at Madison High School, along with the work that we want to do at Sunset Park, which is part of the Halfman Building where we have our early education center along with Madison Prep, to invest in the park, invest in the community, and our entire proposal is about the community as well. So we're really excited about that. So I want you to know that on October 16th, next Monday night, at Madison High School at 7 o'clock, we're going to have a town hall meeting. All of you are invited. Candidates who are running for Senate Council there are invited as well, because I'd love for you to hear a little bit more about the specifics about the proposal, because we're getting some really good feedback, and I'm really glad for that. Then a few days after that, on October 20th, this has become really an annual tradition here within the city, but we have our Pink Out game, our annual Pink Out game. It'll be Landfair High School visiting us over at Madison High School. Both teams are having really good seasons so far, and if it continues, if both teams have a really good weekend, this upcoming weekend, then that game on the 20th really means something special for both individual schools. So we want you to be there. 7 o'clock at Madison High School. We would love to have full participation from our City Council out there that night. It is a Pink Out game. There's going to be a lot of pink going on. I think both teams usually wear pink socks and pink something, pink gloves and all kinds of pink, so as we're raising awareness for Breast Cancer Month. So we would love to have you there. Again, love to see you on the 16th, and as always, if you have any questions, just give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speck. Meeting's open to the public. Would anyone else like to address City Council on any subject? All right, no one's asked to be recognized. Next on the agenda is communications. There's nothing planned, so we'll go to reports, D1. So regarding the renewal of the entertainment permit for Madison Pub Doing Business as On the Rocks Bar and Grill. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. On April 27th, the Madison Pub Doing Business as On the Rocks Bar and Grill entered into an agreement for entertainment permit which calls for review by City Council. The most recent renewal was approved for two years by council on August 20th, 2015. The police department and the city attorney's office have reviewed the agreement for the entertainment permit and have no objections to its continuation in accordance with its terms as requested by the owner's representative. If council concurs, the appropriate action would be to continue the agreement for an additional two years, subject to the same terms and conditions, including but not limited to the next review, which shall take place on or before October 1st, 2019. Steph and I recommend that council approve the continuation of this agreement for entertainment permit for Madison Pub Doing Business as On the Rocks Bar and Grill.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I move that the council approve the continuation of the agreement for an entertainment permit for the Madison Pub Inc., which is currently doing business as On the Rocks Bar and Grill.
For a period of two years under the same terms and conditions?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettings?
Second.
Okay, there was a motion made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to approve the continuation of the agreement for the entertainment permit with Madison Pub Doing Business as On the Rocks Bar and Grill for a two-year term, subject to the same terms and conditions. Any discussion by City Council? Yes, sir.
Is there a representative from On the Rocks here tonight? No. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Any other discussion from City Council? All right, what's the vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Continuing, there's nothing under item E, so we'll go to item F1 under bid awards, and we have a purchase of an automatic chest compression system. Mrs. Marsh?
The fiscal year 2018 budget included funding for the purchase of two new chest compression systems. The chest compression system maximizes the fire department's on-scene resources and improves the safety and delivery of advanced cardiac glass support. The device frees a paramedic from other critical tasks during CPR. These systems deliver high-quality chest compressions, improving blood flow to vital organs during cardiac arrest. This past summer, firefighters performed 11 field use evaluations of two of the leading chest compression devices, with the Lucas 3.0 chest compression system outperforming the other device tested. The evaluations compared the systems in terms of quality of chest compressions, battery life, ease of use, weight, handling, durability, and continued maintenance cost. Steph and I recommend that council waive the formal bid process and award the purchase of two Lucas 3.0 chest compression systems to Physio Control, the manufacturer of Lucas 3.0, for a total of $32,515.22.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Your honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve the purchase of two new Lucas 3.0 chest compression systems from Physio Control in the amount of $32,515.22.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the purchase of two Lucas 3.0 chest compression systems to Physio Control in the amount of $32,515.22. Is there any discussion?
Your honor?
Yes.
This is really cool technology. I'd love if Chief Liddo could come up and kind of explain, you know, the benefits of this. I know there's some efficiency, and, you know, it's a really, really nice piece of tech, and we have it here, so I guess I'm queuing you up.
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably the first opportunity I've ever had to bring up a piece of equipment ever actually purchasing to the council meeting, so it's a great benefit for everyone to see it and everyone in the audience at home. As you see, this device comes in very handy during CPR. It frees up the firefighter to do other vital, important tasks, but it also gives high-quality CPR, which is very hard on a scene. Fatigue is very common for anyone that has done CPR. I know what doing CPR, it becomes very fatigued, and you don't get the proper chest compressions and proper blood flow to the organs. So this device doesn't quit. It keeps going, so it's a tool that we've used in the field now, I think, probably more than 11 times, if that's 11 evaluations we've had, and it's been a huge success. So we're looking forward to having this device and giving better quality care to the residents.
Thank you, chief. Any other discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
This is more of a technical or hands-on question. My experience with this is limited to my first aid merit badge about 100 years ago. But we do also have the 12-lead system that we're employing. How does that interfere with this, or vice versa, or does it... The 12-lead, as I understand it, is quite literally what you put on you in the hospital.
The 12-lead can read your electrical activity or heart, so that's how we determine if there's any blockages, if you're having a heart attack. That's what gives us...this device assists us when the heart is in cardiac arrest.
Okay, do you have to remove the leads?
No, we do not, but we do have to stop the device if we do want to get a read of the heart electrical activity.
Okay, so...
Yeah, so while this is pumping, the EKG is going to read the...
The point is, it's designed to be clear of the leads themselves.
Correct, yes. It works in conjunction.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, please.
No, no, go ahead.
Mr. Soltis?
Chief, I think Mayor Pro Tem said he would do a demonstration.
Yeah.
If you want to go home with cracked ribs.
No, no, he might do more demonstration. We don't want to hurt anybody.
Yeah, you're on Mr. Tem.
No, I misunderstood, too. I'm sorry. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So can I have the chief explain how the patient would be...
Yes, I can. More than happy to show you. So the patient sits, of course, underneath, and this comes down to their chest.
Right.
And then the device keeps pumping that way, so...
Isn't that awesome?
So we slot this over the patient's torso, and then set the machine, set it, and then the CPR continues while we're doing IVs, advanced airways, medication, delivery.
And would that be used on smaller children?
No, to a point. I think the age is 10 or 12 years old.
Okay.
I'm not for sure on that, but there is a limit, correct.
Okay, all right. It's very interesting. I'd love to see it working, but not when you have to see it.
Yeah, not when you have to see it. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from City Council? Okay, let's see, let's vote. All right, we'll go to the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next purchase this evening is F2, and it's the 2017-18 Community Development Block Grant, the Home Chore Snow Removal Program. Mrs. Marsh?
On September the 26th, the city issued an invitation to quote for the Community Development Block Grant Snow Removal Services. A total of 250 vendors were contacted via the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network site, and eight of those vendors who received the email notification downloaded the specification for documents. One quote was received from Expert Lawn and Snow in Ferndale. Referent checks were conducted with Auburn Hills, Ferndale, and Berkeley, all of which were satisfactory. Steph also confirmed with the owner of Expert Lawn and Snow that no subcontractors would be used for the city of Madison Heights for the CDBG Snow Removal Program. Steph and I recommend that council award the bid for the Community Development Block Grant Home Chore Snow Removal to the sole bidder, Expert Lawn and Snow of Ferndale, at the unit cost of $40 per lot per snowfall. This award will have no impact on the DPS Streets and Facilities Division. CDBG funds are budgeted and available for this award.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clerk?
I'd make a motion to award the bid for Community Development Block Grant Home Chore Snow Removal to the sole bidder, Expert Lawn and Snow of Ferndale, at the unit cost of $40 per lot per snowfall.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett? Support. Any discussion from City Council? Any questions? I'll take any questions. Mrs. Marsh, come to the microphone. Thank you, Mrs. Marsh.
Hello. How does it work? Does somebody have...you have to come up to City Hall and fill out an application to use it, or you can...I mean, you call in? I mean, how does it work?
You have choices where to go. You go to the Senior Citizen Center, or you could come to City Hall, the Building Department. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All right, let's vote, City Council. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. All right, there are no ordinances or unfinished business. So can I have a motion regarding the minutes of September 25, 2017?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, correcting the agenda for the meeting, the correct date is September 25th, and I would move to approve the minutes of the September 25th meeting of the City Council.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clerk? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Clark, to approve the minutes of September 25th, 2017. Is there any discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion carries. Next, we have appointments to boards and commissioners. There's one, there's a mayor's appointment for Parks and Rec. The current alternate position is currently filled by Jeremy Carroll, but I ask that council approve my appointment to move Mr. Carroll up to a regular position on the Parks and Rec.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I had moved to confirm the mayor's nomination of the gentleman to a full term on the Parks and Rec Commission.
And can we also add to that motion to declare his current alternate seat vacant?
And declare the alternate seat vacant, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
All right, a motion was made by Councilwoman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to appoint Jeremy Carroll to a full seat on the Parks and Recreation Board and to declare his alternate seat vacant. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gettings?
Could I ask who left the board?
I'm not aware of that.
It was not anybody, if you recall. That was that extra seat that we created a couple of weeks ago, and we did when we went through that mind-numbing experience, yes.
Got you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I think we have really good news. We had several applicants to the city's new Arts and Culture Advisory Board, and so I'll accept any nominations based on those applicants.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Well, if I could do one outside of that...
Oh, yeah, okay. I'll do what you want.
I was just going to offer the nomination of Councilman or Mayor Pro Tem Bliss to serve as the council representative to the Arts and Culture Board for a term of a couple of weeks, and then we'll deal with that later.
All right.
To the end of the current term, to be specific.
Thank you. Is there a support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Bliss as the council delegate to the Arts and Cultural Advisory Board. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Congrats. Other nominations?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
Along the same vote, I would like to nominate Councilwoman Scott to serve as the council alternate on the Arts and Culture Board, again, with the term expiring in mid-November when the other terms due for the council reps.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett? Thank you, Mr. Corbett. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to appoint Councilwoman Margine Scott as the council alternate to the Arts and Culture Board. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you, Margine. Other nominations?
Yes, your honor, we've got a lot of these tonight. I'll try to do a couple at a time for the terms that are expiring at the same time. So let me first nominate to the Arts and Culture Board with a term that expires 9/25/18, Aaron Flanagan and Jenna Uhas.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss. Is there a support?
Mr. Mayor's support.
Mr. Corbett? All right, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss made a motion, supported by Councilman Corbett, to appoint Aaron Flanagan and Jenna Uhas to the Arts and Culture Advisory Board for terms expiring September 25th, 2018. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you for applying you to...other nominations?
Yes, your honor.
Yes, please.
I move that we appoint to the Arts and Culture Board the term expiring 9/25/19, Tracy Cash and Doug Evans.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett? Support? All right, a motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to appoint Tracy Cash and Doug Evans to the Arts and Culture Board for terms expiring September 25th, 2019. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Congratulations. Other nominations?
Your honor?
Yes, please.
For the three remaining seats, I'd like to nominate for the Arts and Culture Board, term expiring 9/25/20, Judy Lewis, Lori Gerolds, and Kristen Bianchi.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Was that Mr. Gettings?
Support.
Thank you, sir. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to appoint Kristen Bianchi, Judy Lewis, and Lori Gerolds to the Arts and Culture Board on terms for terms expiring September 25th, 2020. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thanks again. Can I have a motion for the alternate seat, please?
Yes, your honor.
Yes.
I move that we nominate Lauren Gadua to the alternate seat on the Arts and Culture Board with an expiration of 9/25/20.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett? Support? Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to appoint Lauren Gadua to an alternate seat to the Arts and Culture Board expiring September 25th, 2020. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Congratulations. So that leaves one more alternate seat on the Arts and Culture Board, so if anyone and any resident of Madison Heights would like to apply, we'll still accept applications for that, and Mayor Pro Tem Bliss tells me that we're going to host a meeting of the Arts and Culture Board very soon, so...thank you, City Council. Any other nominations to any other boards this evening?
Yes, your honor.
Yes, please.
I'd like to nominate Jason Rugerio to ITAC with a term ending 2/10/2020.
What year was it?
February 10th, 2020.
2020. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett? Support? Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to appoint Jason Rugerio to the ITAC for a term expiring February 10th, 2020. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Are there other nominations?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we nominate Lauren Gadua to the Multicultural Relations Advisory Board with a term that expires 8/24/19.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis? Support? Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to appoint Lauren Gadua to the Multicultural Relations Board on a term expiring August 24th, 2019. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Anything else?
Yeah. Your honor?
Mrs. Scott? Mrs. Scott?
Yes, I would like to nominate Jennifer Ballantyne for a three-year seat on the Historical Commission, expiring 2/28 of 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett? Support? Thank you. A motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, supported by Councilman Corbett, to appoint Jennifer Ballantyne to the Historical Commission for a seat expiring February 28, 2020. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gettins?
The person you appointed before you said August for the expiration date, is that, should be August or October?
Ms. Lauren on the multicultural board?
Yeah.
The packet says August.
It is August.
Yeah, probably when the board was created.
The motion was August, and I meant to say August if I did.
No, you did say August.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other applications I've missed? Okay, thanks.
Your honor?
Yes, please.
There's one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, Your Honor, I didn't see that.
Lauren Gadua is really busy. She applied to three, so.
Oh, I see. Mr. Bliss, will you make the motion?
Sure. Your honor, I move that we appoint Lauren Gadua to the Library Advisory Board with a term ending 7/1/19.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor?
Mr. Corbett? Support? A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to appoint Lauren Gadua to the Library Advisory Board for a term expiring July 1, 2019. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Mr. Mayor? I would just in ...
Motion carries.
I would just in passing make a comment. There will probably be another vacancy on the library board in a few weeks if anybody's interested. They could put in their application, and sooner than later, I think that there'd be an opening and an opportunity to join the group. That's all.
Thanks. All right, yeah, motion carries. She was appointed to that board.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sherman?
Just one comment about the last appointment, and that is that on her application, Ms. Gadua put an Oar between the Multicultural Relations or Library Advisor, Environmental Citizen. So maybe the city clerk could check with her just to make sure that she's okay with the appointment to the Library Advisory Board, if she's willing to serve on both.
If the clerk would, if you do make that call, can you just tell her the environmental board hasn't met in eight or nine years?
Yes, I will, and I'll report back.
It's not like it's going to be a weekly project. But no, that's a good point. And if the applicant does want out, we'll accept her resignation. Any other nominations to boards this evening? All right, hearing none. We do not have an executive session planned, so before we adjourn, I invite any closing comments from city council. Could we please begin with Mr. Corbett?
Just one comment. I was going to mention that we'll be having office hours again this Friday, 1 to 3, at the library, if anybody would like to stop in and ask questions, complaints, compliments, whatever the topic may be. However, sitting in for me this week, we will have a special guest appearance by the Mayor Pro Tem, who will be filling in on Friday. So you can abuse him or praise him as you see fit. But we are there every Friday from 1 to 3, and that's it. That's all I have, sir.
Very good. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. So I'm really excited. We had 12 board appointments tonight. There's a lot to get through, but it's a nice signal of the energy within our city, with people looking to serve, people looking to make a difference. Extremely excited that, like ITAC, we've now filled the Arts and Culture Board, I mean, even down to the first alternate, the next meeting after we formed the committee. It's really exciting to me. I think we're going to get off to a very fast start. Now we just have to fill the three student slots. If only we knew somebody from Madison District Public Schools who could help us facilitate that. But I'll reach out to the different school districts, and I know the clerk's office will as well, and we'll make sure that we have student representatives from each of our three school districts at that first meeting, which, you know, hopefully will take place in the next couple of weeks to get this board off as quickly as possible. Lots of excitement there, a lot of people energetic about this cause, about what this arts board can bring to our city, what type of events we can do. I was talking to Councilwoman Scott before the meeting, and, you know, she's got a couple of ideas. And so, you know, it'll be great to just bring everybody together, sit in a room and say, what can we do? And what are the resources and the things we need to do to get it done? And I think this board is going to bring a lot of energy and excitement to our city, and I'm very excited that not only were we able to get it passed, but the board, for all intents and purposes, is filled. And that is a really, really amazing thing. I'm super appreciative of the staff for processing all of these applications so quickly, and of course, of everybody who saw what we're trying to do and applied, and is willing to give us their time and their talent to be able to make this city better. So very excited about that, very thankful, and looking forward to seeing what this board can do for our city in the coming years. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Gettins?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mrs. Brent?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The city general election is Tuesday, November 7. The polls will be open in all voting precincts in the city from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Aptity ballot applications are available at the city clerk's office or online. The last day to register for this election, for those of you that may be watching or in the audience, is tomorrow, Tuesday, October 10. Our office will be open from 8:00 to 4:30, with the exception of lunch hour, 11:30 to 12:30. So come on down if you're not registered. We'll be happy to do that for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I had a very delightful day, and it was started by one of our youth, Emma Green, who graduated from Lamphier just this last year. And it was something we have never done before in the city, and Emma was using it as a college project. She attends Ohio Northern, and she has always been somewhat not disturbed, but just very cognizant of the fact that sometimes women are not appreciated in terms of the workforce or in terms of representation in government and et cetera. So what she did on her own was she got her best friend together, who was also majoring in politics, and got permission from the Lamphier Schools that we hold a small meeting with all the girls that are in the fourth and fifth grades of the Lamphier Schools. I think Edmondson already had their own program. So we met at Simon's, Hiller, and Lessinger, and they had, representing were Rosalyn Grassteen, who's in our audience tonight, and who's running for council, and Jeanette Egert, myself, Lori Geraldts, who represented the volunteer force, and Linda Williams, who's our Economic Development Director. But it was wonderful, enlightening. I almost feel like making a permanent program of this, because the girls were very impressed, not only with what we talked to them, but in terms of talking about what's important to a girl, and she can never start too early. I did, what I did was I talked about role models for women, and I talked about Susan B. Anthony and how she affected every woman in the United States today because she got us the right, one of the people that worked so hard to get women the right to vote. Unfortunately, it was given to her after she passed away, but she still gets credit for that. And so it was using several women as role models in the community, and I think that everybody was there, was a wonderful presenter. And I think that probably the girls are thinking a little bit more about things that a girl can do to make herself more valuable in the community and to have a lot of confidence in herself as she gets ready to go to middle school. So I'm interested to hear the feedback from Emma, and I think it was a wonderful program, and I hope we can do it again. Emma, as you remember, was our mayor the last two years when we had the Student Mock Council. And she's a very challenging young lady. I have a lot of promise for her. She got up and openly said that she wants to be running for Senator of the United States at some point. So more power to her, and if there's any indication of what she's already done, she's on a good track. So I want to thank the Lamphier Schools for supporting that. Hopefully, we can do that for Madison someday, you know? And Bishop Foley. I think it's never too early to get women involved in their community and show the power that they can achieve. But that, thank you, and it was a wonderful experience, and thank you very much for everybody who participated in it. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Mr. Soltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I've been saying this for like four years, that we need to look above us in the upper levels of government in a proactive way, because then we can anticipate what's coming down the road. Because in the city, it's a trickle-down effect, and it's not necessarily a good way. However, on the county level, there is supposed to be $600,000 allocated to seniors to help for the, to eliminate the no wait list for the In-Home Chairs Chores Program. There certainly is a definite critical need for this extra funding. It hasn't happened yet officially. End of October, they're supposed to vote on it, so we'll keep an eye on it. Again, in terms of seniors, which seem to be the first to get hit in terms of budgets on the upper levels. On the federal level, if you heard, the House just passed a approved series of provision bills. So far, seniors are affected where the elimination of, it's called the State Health Insurance Assistance Program, 47 million, and elder justice support activities, that's about 2 million. The meals on wheels, hopefully right now, is going to stay the same.